Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. And Commissioner Rogers did call and ask to be excused as he's making a presentation this morning. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, no, approval of minutes of Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, July 1st, 2014, and B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, July 29th, 2014, has a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of admitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
Motion approved.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Morgan.
Lights on.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Item C, citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. There are four resolutions.
Motion approved.
For a second. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Boyle?
Yes. I wanted to ask about the two that were denied. It looks like, you know, it's a situation similar to the homestead exemption where a deadline was missed. And my feeling is that the nonprofit status of these organizations is really, is granted by the constitution of the state of Nebraska, not by legislation, although it's supported by legislation. And so I feel strongly that nonprofits who blow a deadline should be given the advantage of the tax exemption that's called for, for their kinds of operations, 501(c)(3)'s. So I would move that both of those organizations be allowed the exemptions for their vehicles. One I know is a minister, Christian minister group, and another, I don't remember exactly what it is they do, but both of them are involved in nonprofit charitable work. I believe they qualify under the statute but for this deadline. So I would move that we grant those exemptions for the NF, application for tax exemption on motor vehicles recommended for denial by the county treasurer. I would recommend that we allow those tax exemptions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Morgan.
I'll second it so that we could have some discussion on it. Maybe Mr. Goodwilly wants to comment, I'm not sure, or the county attorney.
It was the treasurer.
It was the treasurer.
Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor. Although the tendency is to find that every, everything that goes wrong in the courthouse is late at the feet of the county assessor, in the case of motor vehicles, that's a treasurer issue. Commissioner Morgan, you would have to chat with them.
Is there anyone here from the treasurer's office? I'm not sure if we're setting a precedent on this matter. And Teresa, do you have any thoughts for us?
Teresa here at county attorney's office. Tax exemptions are to be strictly construed, and the statute does provide for deadlines that the taxpayer is supposed to meet. It's my understanding, based on the paperwork submitted by the treasurer, that they did not comply with those deadlines.
Is there, as with the homestead exemption, there's exceptions to that rule? Are there any exceptions for this, in these particular cases, as to if they had a valid reason as to why they were late? I don't, I don't see any reasons as to why they were late, but...
Teresa here at county attorney's office. I also didn't note any particular reason why they were late. One was more late than the other, and I don't believe anyone is here to speak on that. And lastly, to directly answer your question, it does not have the similar type of excuses or reasons to waive that you would see in the other statute that you referenced, Commissioner.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Boyle?
In looking at the applications, the first one, which is denial of the tax exemption for Outlook Nebraska, it's for a 1997 Chevy. It is used, as they describe, it's used to fulfill our mission, which is to enhance the quality of life of the blind and visually impaired through providing employment. Outlook is a 501(c)(3) organization and is affiliated with the National Industries for the Blind. I think, and it looks like they missed the deadline, but just a matter of days, because it was sometime in June when it was due, and it didn't file until July 8th. And on the second one, which is a, the Faith Christian Fellowship, it's for a 2011 Chrysler. And this is used by the senior pastor for hospital visitation, weddings, funerals, food delivery, and pickup for downtown outreach meetings, and training both in-town and out-of-town other duties as assigned. And it's signed by the special projects person for that organization. Again, I believe it was, maybe this was longer, it looks like it, down at the bottom, it's noted mailed December 20, December 23rd, 2013, received February 4th, 2014, which looks like it'd be in time. So I'm not really sure. I guess my point is, first of all, I think these organizations are, have a special status because of their standing as 501(c)(3)'s charitable organizations spelled out in the Nebraska Constitution. And I frankly think any of the administrative deadlines that are put into place that prevent them from taking advantage of their status, and I don't mean taking advantage, but using what they're entitled to, I think is, is a wrong decision. So, and in one case, it was a matter of days, and the others, I'm not, the other, I'm not sure. But again, it's people who are using a car, a van, for hospital visits and funerals and food delivery, and I just think they qualify.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, hi, Tim, you want to come up? I don't know if you heard the entire discussion of...
We did. Tim Kavanaugh, Chief Deputy Treasurer, this is Corinne Burnett, our Motor Vehicles Manager. My understanding, there is a process for appealing this, if you turn it down. And it would be through the Board of Equalization, is that correct? So this is part of the process of appealing it when you miss your deadline.
Oh, okay.
Is if you do turn it down.
Yes, but they would come back.
Come back.
Which is probably what we should do.
Okay.
Yeah.
In that case, yeah, I'd be, I'd be fine with having them come back.
I mean, we feel bad certainly about it, but we're, we're kind of obligated to follow the guidelines we're given.
Yeah, no kidding, that's right.
So they could come back, right, next week or whenever.
Well, by come back, Corinne, you want to...
They have an opportunity to appeal this through Lincoln Turk.
They have to go to Turk?
Yeah.
Oh, rather.
And my understanding is this one's already gone at that level, and they deny them because they were late for that as well.
Can you step to the microphone? You're saying that they were, they already went to Turk and they were denied?
Correct.
And they were late for that one, she also said.
Well, I, I have empathy because I'm late for a lot of things, so. I guess under the circumstances, I probably should withdraw my motion, but we'll try to, thank, and I appreciate your second, Commissioner Morgan.
Well, that's very good, yeah, but you thought about that.
Yeah.
Very good.
So I guess you're right.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank goodness for closed circuit TV.
Pardon me?
Thank goodness for closed circuit TV.
Thank you very much for coming, coming by.
So with that, we will, the motion is to approve the resolutions D, E, F, and G. Please vote.
Motion passes.
There is one other item on Board of Equalization, and it's a grant waiver to allow the processing of application for personal property, return filing, and grant waiver of any late filing penalties requested by taxpayer for Peter Kiwi Foundation, 1125 South 103rd Street, Suite 500, Omaha, 68124.
Good morning, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor's Office. What the Kiwi Foundation is asking for is statutory for nonprofits who have property in the preceding year, who missed the December 31 exemption application deadline, whether they're first-time applicants or applicants in full-year exemptions, exemption years, years divisible by four. If you miss that December 31 deadline, there is a statutory mechanism in 77202.01 to ask for a waiver of the time deadline so that they can file prior to June 30th and have that application processed by the assessor's office. We don't really have any problem with, with granting the waiver.
I do have a question, though, in terms of waiving the penalties, and this goes to the county attorneys as a question. I thought we couldn't do that.
The, we don't even get to do that.
So this is just waiving the lateness?
This is waiving the lateness, yes. But then later in that section, the language dealing with penalty is all mandatory, uses the word shall. So I don't, I don't know if the county attorney has a different opinion, but I'm not, I'm not certain you can waive it.
Teresa, is that not correct, that we can't waive the lateness?
Teresa here at county attorney's office, I would concur with Mr. Goodwilly. The wording is shall, which is mandatory when used in statutory construction. So the penalty shall be collected.
So the motion would be to grant the waiver to allow the processing of the application, period?
Correct.
Correct.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, it's kind of fascinating, these two would collide. We have a foundation, a well-respected foundation, that's asking for some help with a $202,000 exemption. And they do terrific work, and I have no problem with giving it to them, but why can't the same kind of exemption process apply to, why can't we get the law changed, or should we, for some poor people that are driving vans around to help the blind?
Well, whether you can get the law changed, or should you get the law changed, is sort of above my pay grade. What I would suggest is, without looking at the statutes that deal with the applications for motor vehicle exemptions, is that for whatever reason, the legislature didn't see fit to provide for this kind of a late filing waiver.
Okay.
And penalty. You know, I, I don't know what process the treasurer uses, I don't know what statutes govern them. What I do know is the ones that govern the applications we deal with, in this particular section, there is a provision for filing late.
Let me ask you a question. What was the statute you cited?
I want to say it's 77202.01, might be .02. I think I'm within, I'm within a section or two of it, but yes.
Well, your encyclopedic memory is right on point, one or the other. I'll look into it, and we'll see if we can't kind of maybe grant that same kind of courtesy to the people who are doing other things charitably as well.
Well, Commissioner, I'm not sure this is a courtesy. I mean, this is, this is something that the legislature has provided by statute. I don't know what they've done over on the car side.
I would call it a courtesy, because they've given the courtesy to this kind of organization, but they haven't given the same treatment to others. So that's all I'm looking at, is let's try to see if we can't make it equitable and fair for everyone. So I appreciate it, and I intend to vote for this. Thank you.
Okay. Teresa, did you have anything?
I simply wanted to tell Commissioner Boyle that it is 77202.01, specifically subsection 2.
Six.
Subsection 2.
Thank you.
So again, the request was to grant the waiver to allow processing, as well as grant the waiver for any late filing penalties, but our motion is just to grant the waiver to allow the processing of the application. Okay? Please vote.
Motion passes.
And then is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Please vote.
Just one, please.
We're anxious to adjourn.
Okay. Motion passes.
Next, we'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha. Madam Chair.
Here. Item 1, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, June 10th, 2014.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the report from the Director of Corrections. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Mark Foxall, Director of Corrections. We have before you the monthly report for June. Enclosure number one, Administrative Services. At the close of the 2013-2014 fiscal year, we end it under budget, it's a good thing. State of Omaha is billed through June 2014, and they've paid 90% of their invoices through April 2014. They've audited invoices through February 2014, and paid audited invoice balances through February 2014, putting their balance at 574,007. Closure number two, Community Corrections and In-House Programs. Community Corrections first, the 24/7 program is, as you know, underway. Staff have been trained and are now utilizing the SCRAM or the Transdermal Alcohol Detection Device. The first 24/7 participant on the Transdermal Device started shortly thereafter, so that aspect of the program is operational. The 24/7 Planning Committee recently met to discuss expansion of the pilot program, and we are going to expand the types of individuals that will be entered into the program. So that's another advancement for 24/7. Also, in the past month, the Nebraska Highway, Nebraska Office of Highway Safety and a representative of the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety conducted a site visit to the 24/7 program, and this is pursuant to the requirements of the grant. The visit was positive, there were no program deficiencies observed. Both the state and the federal representatives were eager to see the program grow and replicated in other jurisdictions. Douglas County, by the way, is the first 24/7 site in the United States to receive Office of Highway Safety funding. The Reentry Initiatives Council met on June 6th. Updates were provided regarding 24/7, the web-based program, excuse me, the 24/7 program, the web-based case management system, and the reentry website. Representatives from the council and state governments, the Justice Reinvestment Team were conducted a site visit to Douglas County on July 14th. The National Reentry Resource Center recommended that this team visit with corrections officials. So those meetings went well in June. Work release, work release clients donated 2,326 hours of community service to various public and private charitable organizations. Work release admitted 74 individuals over the past month. House arrest had 103 intakes, 432 hours of community service were provided by these individuals. Reentry Assistance Program admitted 28 individuals during the month of June. And House Corrections Programs admitted 95 individuals to the program, and that's inside the facility in secure custody. Pretrial Services, two individuals were referred for priority prosecution, 302 bed days were saved. 188 individuals were added to the pretrial rolls, and 741 individuals were managed on pretrial with a 96% compliance rate. Robert Demond, talked to him, talked to you about him in the past. He returns to the facility, in fact, he's here with us today. Returned to the facility on July 21st to conduct final PRIA training session, so those are going good. And with his visit this week, that'll wrap up the training for PRIA for our facility. Personnel, enclosure number four, had two promotions, had two to Sergeant and five to Correctional Officer, two, and with more promotions to come. Our population, warmer months, population is up. We had 1,510 admits in June, 1,547 releases. Our ADP, or the average daily population, was 1,150. US Marshal population has increased, the ICE population has increased, felony pretrial population has increased, misdemeanor pretrial population has increased as well. Female population is also up, and the third female housing unit remains open. Medical intake screenings, 1,262. H&amp;Ps, or the health and physical assessments, 509. Discharge referrals, 192, so discharge referral program continues to go well. And we continue to meet with providers in the community so that our case managers have more referrals, so we can increase that discharge referral number. Mental health, there were 43 initial psych assessments, there were 211 initial mental health assessments, 44 mental health infirmary placements. That number continues to grow, referrals to community-based mental health services, outpatient psych, three, mental health and co-occurring disorder treatment programs, 54, mental health therapy was three, and long-term psych facility was two. So it's a busy, busy month for us. July is also proving to be busy as well, but that is consistent with previous years for this time of the year, and the climate as well. Are there any questions?
You had to ask.
I did.
Are you all done with the entire report?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Tusha?
Thank you. Mark, I do have, of course, a couple of questions. First of all, on page one underneath the revenue, I'm not concerned about the revenue as much, but it says on there that we are budgeted for 71 of the ICE population, and we're averaging 65. What happens if we go over that? Are we allowed to come back and ask for more revenue, or do we just cut it off at 71?
No, we just estimate what our revenue, we estimate what our revenue is, and it's just the revenue ebbs and flows depending on the intake.
Okay. So it could go above that?
Could go.
Okay. All right, that answers that question. My next question is, of course, back on your staffing again. I see you're still 15 short. You have 17 new that start training July 7th. Is that...
They've started already.
They started already, yeah.
Yes.
This is after July.
Yes. Yeah, this is the, these are June numbers. They started July 7th, so our staffing numbers are up.
Oh, good. So is that including with the couple of them that have left the county? So right now, you're probably about even?
We're about even, probably, one, two, three, three ahead, but remember, our attrition's about two and a half, three a month.
Yeah.
So it won't take long before we slip back down, but we're proposing another class pretty quick to try to stay even with our higher, with our numbers.
Well, that's good news for a change.
Yes, it is.
You know, you've been really behind all this time.
Yes.
So that's nice to hear that you're at least close to being even on that.
Our recruiting efforts of the staff, the recruiting efforts of the staff have really paid off, and this last class of 17 shows that our recruiting efforts have paid off.
And how are they going so far?
So far, so good.
Great, great news. Let's hope they keep that up. Of course, the overtime, I'm a little bit concerned about it because of the fact that it's starting to spike a little bit, and this, this showed on this is 620, and of course, the July and August is not in there yet, so I'm still a little bit concerned about the overtime. Even with the 17 new, or do you still foresee, do you see any of this going down? Because vacation is sick and, and, you know, workman's comp, all that is pretty well set down, so you should have it leveled off a little bit.
No, I think when this class graduates, that should address the overtime issues considerably.
Okay, and when do they graduate?
I don't have the date in my head, but it's nine weeks from the start of July 7th.
Okay. All right. That takes care of that, then. Congratulations, though, on the no deficiencies on your 24/7 program. That is totally awesome. That is great. Now, didn't you say the funding is through fall of this year, am I correct on that? And don't you have to reapply?
We're working on a reapplication of the grant funds, and Mr. Myers, to speak to you, he has oversight of the 24/7 program, let him speak to you as to what we're looking at fall and beyond. Michael?
Morning. Congratulations. That's awesome that this is working.
Yep. Mike Myers, Community Corrections Manager for the Department of Corrections. We are currently funded through September 30th, and we should be getting word any day now. We were basically invited to reapply for a second-year funding, so I'm cautiously optimistic...
For the same dollar amount?
In essence, yes. We, the first grant, we, was only an eight-month grant because we could not transcend federal fiscal years, which ends September 30th. So we basically had an eight-month grant from when we were starting to train staff to run through September 30th. The second grant would be for the 12-month cycle.
Okay. When you get an answer, could you email the commissioners to let us know?
Absolutely.
I'm sure it's going to be a yes, but just to verify that for sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And Mike, you might stay there, because I don't know if this is for you or if this is for Mark. I noticed on the GED on the men, there was 41 requested for the men and six for the women, which I was surprised that the men superseded the women by that much. But how is that process coming along with the new GED process?
We are still working on getting the testing center up and running, and we had a little snag in hiring on our Community Corrections vacancy. Actually, met yesterday with HR to kind of review some options for that, to try and keep pushing that forward. In the jail, the students are receiving the instruction on the new curriculum, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to start testing those students within the upcoming weeks.
Now, you have a limit on how many students can go in at one time, or will you be able to take all of these?
Well, since we will become our own testing center, well, we can take all of these students into the classes for instruction. And since we'll be coming, we will become our own testing center, actually, two separate testing centers for the jail and Community Corrections, we will be able to schedule our own testing. This is something that we were kind of at the mercy of Metro, Metropolitan Community College in the past. They provided the testing for us, but we were at the mercy of their availability to do it. Now, we will be able to conduct testing as we see the demand to do it. So we should be able to test students as soon as they're ready, as soon as we feel they're competent enough to pass the test.
Okay, what happens if they don't pass it? Is the testing different levels, or is it just one straight level and they have to hit that level?
Yeah, it's just one, there's a cutoff score, and they have to achieve it. If they don't pass it, they do get to retake the test. I'll have to refresh my memory, but I believe they can retake it an additional, two more times without incurring an additional cost.
Okay.
And, and they have no, there's no time limit on, on how long that takes.
So they can study, or do you guys offer the stuff that they can study to go ahead and take it again?
Absolutely.
If they, if they fail it the first time, do you work with them on the areas that they failed?
Yeah, the instructor would review the results with them, and, and then tailor their time in the classroom towards those areas of weakness that they need to shore up before they test again.
Okay, cool. Well, keep us updated on that also. All right, for you, Mark, a quick question. Can you, can you refresh my memory with the PRIA training, what that was?
Actually, as I said, my PRIA coordinator is here. Let him talk to you about the training.
Yes, please.
Chris Sweeney. And I think the PRIA training has gone, has gone quite well. It's been very well received by the staff. I'll let Chris Sweeney speak to you about the particulars of the training program.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Sweeney, Douglas County Department of Corrections, Accreditation Manager and PRIA Coordinator. PREA Coordinator. About four years ago, we started working on the PREA initiative, so it's a Prison Rape Elimination Act. And one of the requirements is that we have to train all staff, volunteers, inmates, anyone that comes into the facility on how to, how to identify victims of sexual assault.
That's right, okay.
Yep, so.
So you're training everybody currently right now, and then we're gonna have specific people to help train new ones that come in? Is that how we're doing this?
Correct. We've also got our, as part of our e-learning system, we have a annual training that is provided to our staff, so, yep.
Okay. And Mark, this is grant-funded, right? Or not? It is? And then how long will that go?
The grant was extended through the end of September, so.
Okay.
But this is Bob Demond's last trip to our facility, so.
So after, after September and the grant runs out, then it's up to us to incur the costs of all this?
To continue the training.
Okay.
And that's the, the course that's on our e-learning system that, that is part of that package, so those, those courses are available to us, yep.
Well, thank you for the explanation, and thank you for the visit. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mark, one last thing. I just want to say congratulations to your staff. I mean, there's many awards and promotions and commendations, and I just wanted to say congratulations to everybody who have received something, and congratulations to you and your staff for the awesome work you are doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, first, I want to congratulate you on that grant from the Office of Highway Safety Funding. Who did that? Do you know who got that put together?
Uh, Mike Myers and Asher Strater worked on that.
So you have a, they have a bonus in line, is that it?
[laughing]
I do appreciate that very much.
Satisfaction for a job well done.
Right. Well, we really appreciate it because that, all that helps, helps us tremendously with cost, and it's just great to see you doing that. And grant writing is, is a specialty, so we appreciate that. I had a question on another, the next page, I guess. It's, uh, deals with the PREA training sessions. Can you tell us what that is?
That's just what Chris Sweeney was speaking about. That's our Prison Rape Elimination Act. That's the training.
Say, would you say it again?
That's the Prison Rape Elimination Act.
Okay.
And that's federal, federal law, apply, applicable to all correctional facilities in, in the country, federal, state, and, and county, city lockups. And it's just what Chris Sweeney was speaking about. It's a training program that instructs our staff, contracts, providers, volunteers that come in to the facility, how to recognize incidents of, of vulnerable, vulnerable population or sexual assault, victimization. Inmates have to be trained, go through orientation pro, process, and we will have to undergo orientation process annually. But this first training that Mr. Demond is providing, and he's here, as I said, today, is to get everyone up to speed, and then we will do in-service annually thereafter.
That's good. Thank you. I also wanted to ask, on the next page, under enclosure eight, mental health, there's a, a comment about mental health infirmary placements, and I think the answer is there are forty-four. Where are they being placed, in your facility?
Yes, yes, they are.
Okay, and how many beds do you have? Eight?
No, um, we, we have Denise Gaines come up and speak to you with, with, with respect to that. As you know, we have a thousand four hundred and fifty-three beds, and we have people housed all over the facility, but individuals that have mental health needs that require more care are placed in the infirmary. And that could be the male side of the infirmary or the female inside of the, of the infirmary.
Okay.
Denise.
So how many beds do you have in the infirmary?
Good morning, Denise Gaines, Douglas County Corrections. On the female side, on the bottom tier, because there's two tiers, we have four rooms, which can be used for suicide watches, detoxification of inmates, those inmates that are experiencing a mental health crisis such as psychosis, and we want to keep a closer eye on them.
Okay.
And then on the top tier, I believe there are six additional.
So, okay, so those are used for the males?
Females, on the female side.
Okay, that's a total of ten for females then?
Uh, I believe that's correct.
Okay, how about?
On the male side, there are nine rooms on the bottom tier. And on the bottom tier, let me, let me go back. On the bottom tier, all of those rooms are single cell. There's only one bed in each of those rooms.
Is this in the infirmary?
This is in the medical unit, yes, in the infirmary.
I don't remember it being that big.
It's, yeah.
I think it's time for another tour.
Today.
Today.
It sounds bigger than what it, what it feels like when you're in there with a lot of people.
Okay, well, the reason I bring that up is that we've been talking about trying to find some way to, you're doing a great job, but we'd like you to do even a greater job of treating the mentally ill, because we have so many inmates, of course, who are, who are caught in that trap. And I, and I'm wondering whether there isn't some way for us to circumvent the federal number of sixteen beds or some crazy thing that got into a federal law. Is there some way that we can, can do something to expand? If you can treat forty-four people and you have nineteen beds, why can't you have thirty-eight? Is it money?
I'm not gonna answer that. I'm gonna answer the piece that I can answer, and then I'll let Dr. Foxall answer it if he can answer.
We can always bleep your answer from the beginning.
Oh, okay, all right. Just take that out of my mouth, I'll be moving in no words, okay. That's what my husband hears, I think. But, at any rate, there's, I didn't tell you, there's a top tier to the infirmary on the male side. There's an additional that goes from ten through nineteen on the top tier.
So we have another?
So there are, there are additional beds on the male side.
So there's about nineteen beds for men?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Rooms.
Yeah.
The, the top tier, those, those are double bunked.
Okay.
And on occasion, we've had to double bunk people because it's been too full.
And, and my point is that, first, you're doing a terrific job. I'm very pleased with what you do, and it's, it's the right thing to do. I'd like to make it even more expansive, because we have so many people that are suffering from mental illness, not only in the criminal setting, but also in the non-criminal, just out on the street. And if we can find some way to, to increase the number of beds and get by with it under federal guidelines, I know they're very restrictive. If we can figure out a way to do that, I'll ask the chair, because she seems to, seemed to react. Madam Chair, is it money?
I just want, the IMD issue, the Institute for Mental Disease.
Right.
Doesn't have anything to do with the jails.
Right.
That's the beds for our.
On the, on the street.
Inpatient, our community nonprofits. What the issue in the jail is that we're trying, even on the national level, to continue to work, and I have requests out for our delegation to carry a legislative initiative to have Medicaid and private insurance pay for those until they're sentenced, because that's a cost to the county. So the number of beds in a jail don't really fall under the IMD issue, but it does fall under that big discussion Commissioner Boyle and I continue to have is, do we really want to expand inside our jail, the mental health services?
Well, of course, at one time, we went over to Forty-second and Woolworth and looked at a facility, but I think the IMB did.
Is that, right, that's where.
Control that.
Right.
And I'm trying to figure out some way so they, we can get them out of the way.
Right.
And treat, you know, if we can't treat the people on the street because of these federal restrictions, which is insane, maybe we can figure out some way to increase the treat, the numbers who can be treated, who are incarcerated. Maybe we can figure something out. I'm not sure what that would be. But how many bunks can we get in your office?
No.
No, I'm just kidding. Well, but I think we need to talk, I'd like to talk about that, because you're, you're in the know and I'm not, but I'd really be very interested. So let's put that on an agenda for a discussion. I, I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. And to answer part of the question that you asked, I think it, it is gonna take dollars, because you're gonna have to retrofit more rooms and, and housing units to accommodate folks that are mentally ill, that are psychotic, because it can be dangerous when someone is engaging in self-injurious behaviors and you have sharp edges to beds and, you know, things like that. So you're, you're really looking at money, which is why I, I've punted that to Dr. Foxall, because that's gonna come out of budget, because you have to, again, you have to take bunks, you have to remove them from walls, you have to really retrofit, you know, rooms that are not really designed to house someone in, in that kind of condition. So you're, you're looking at dollars, which I don't have.
Well, for, for me, this is one of the priorities, is the treatment, if not the, the treatment of mentally ill in the community and, and, and our facility is, to me, the number one, probably the number one priority, certainly, there's child issues in there as well, but, so I, I, I really would be very interested in, you know, maybe we have to cancel a computer contract and do something. So I've often called this the Douglas County Board of Computers, because we have so much invested in computers. Anyhow, I appreciate the answers, and we'll discuss that further.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one other question that I wanted to ask Dr. Foxall, and it's kind of loaded, and I don't expect an answer, but we have sex offenders who have to register, and presently, they have to go to one hundred and fifty-sixth and Maple, which does not have bus service, and it's not exactly, if you, I suppose if you plotted where sex offenders are living, they would be more in my neighborhood than in Commissioner Borgeson's. And so I'm wondering whether, and I know that she's asked the sheriff, to allow sex offenders to register at least one day a week in a downtown facility, maybe the courthouse or someplace adjacent. I'm wondering whether maybe we ought to consider moving this responsibility to the Department of Corrections. So I just, we bring that up. It might be something that would work better for everybody involved, and that's why, I don't need an answer today, I don't want you to, unless you feel like answering. You've got enough to do, I know, but.
Well, I, we've, we've been in, in conversation with the, with Sheriff's Office about the location where sex offenders register, and those conversations are, are ongoing. I know there's been an issue raised, as you discussed, as to where they have to register now, but I know they're looking at locations in the.
Right.
And in the eastern part of the city. And we have been talking with them about whether one of our facilities could be used as a site, and as, have no definitive answer from them yet as to whether or not they're going to take us up on that. But I know they're looking at a lot of different options to provide registration site other than just at the one hundred and fifty-sixth Street location.
Okay. One other question I'd like, or comment I'd like to throw out there, if, if Corrections doesn't end up with this. What about the state probation offices? They're spread out all across the community. I mean, sex offenders are sex offenders, they're generally, most of them are, most of them are low-level, not going to offend again. I, I wonder whether we couldn't talk to the state about, can you, can you take over the responsibility of allowing these people to give you, all they're doing is telling you your new, their new address. That's what it amounts to. So I think we ought to be, maybe we ought to talk to the state and say, hey, listen, we're already paying the rent for your buildings, you know, will you have somebody do this for us?
I, I think when we looked at the statute, the statute is a, the deputy shall.
Right.
Be the ones to register them, but my question, which I haven't asked yet, except for right now, was whether or not they could deputize a correctional officer or a probation officer to do such that, that. I know it has to do with the software that they use, because it goes into that big statewide registry to keep track of them all. And so that could potentially be a legislative initiative.
Okay.
That we work on, but community corrections would be my preference and would work quite well, I think, because we have everything set up right there for them to walk right into and register. So now it's just a question of the computer, software, and all of that needs to be input in that area, so.
Well, Commissioner Borgeson's taking the lead, and I just had to put my nose in it.
Okay. We've, we've been engaged in those conversations about, about location.
Okay.
So it's just, as I said, we just have not heard a, a definite answer as to what the alternate outcome's going to be.
And I think we are due for a tour of the facility. Is everybody mostly available?
Today.
Okay, it'll probably be, there's a meeting after this meeting. I would imagine it could be as, as early as noon.
Potentially.
That means we could eat over there.
Always welcome to do that as well.
Hey, oh gee, thanks. All right, thank you very much.
Mark, on the twenty-seven, twenty-four-seven program, if someone, with this whole initiative of reform going on at the state level with their prisons, if someone is sentenced to one of the state facilities and then, and it was for a DUI, can they then request to come back and be put on our twenty-four-seven program in the community? Or does it have to happen upon what happens down here at our end?
Those are decisions that, right now, at point of intake, are made at county court and district court level. So if that person went in to state custody and then came back out.
No, say that they're there, and now that we have this.
In our facility.
Yeah, they're in the state prison, but, you know, they're continually bringing people back to our community.
Mm-hmm.
Say that they're there for a DUI sentence, can they come back and be put on this twenty-four-seven program?
That, that would have to be by order of the court.
Order of the court?
Yes.
Okay. And then lastly, as Commissioner Boyle was talking about the mental health, can we, on the last page where you have all the numbers about intake and assessments and placements, can we graph those out per month?
Yes.
Just so we can, you have the year-to-date back.
Yes.
In the back, but can we?
Yes.
Follow a month-to-month per graph, because I think it would be easier to follow what our increases and decreases are.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have that ready for you next month.
All right, thanks. Any other questions for Director Foxall? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
With that, as Commissioner Boyle said, there is a tour today at the corrections facility that we'll try to get organized after our Administrative Services Committee following the board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Please vote. We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, July first, two thousand fourteen, and item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Consent agenda, items A through L. Please note that item B has been removed and item E has been removed.
You said B and E?
B as in ob and E as in elephant.
I have a.
Oh, I just noticed that. Please vote.
Motion to.
Please vote.
Ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Well, I do have a question, excuse me, about H.
H.
It is, um.
Yep.
There's a refund of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and it doesn't say that it's, I suppose it can't be budgeted, but it says it's not budgeted. And this is a claim, there are several organizations that I, I would assume, Mr. Goodwill isn't here, I would assume that what this is, is that there were clerical there were clerical mistakes made by employees of these companies that added up to this $200,000 refund. Is that generally, you think, what happened?
Yeah, they used to put a, back in the day, they used to write, this goes with the treasurer's office, and they used to write what the reason was on these refunds.
Well, they've got voucher change.
Well, they're kind of voucher change.
Voucher change Turk, does that mean that Turk reduced it? I don't understand. And then, there's a few in here, this one for $188,000, it says voucher change Turk. I just, I guess I'd like more information, I'll ask the treasurer's office to kind of get more information on these in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I did have a question about J, but I have to go back to...
J?
Oh, no, I don't either. Those are, I just wanted to mention to Patrick, those are very helpful when you spell out what the payments are for, I appreciate that, and the department that was involved. Thank you.
Okay. Any other items for the consent? Please vote.
I guess, did she have something? Commissioner Tusha?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion passes.
Recognition and proclamations, we have one, recognition of county employee Cheryl Sweet retiring from Douglas County General Assistance after 15 years of service, and I understand Cheryl isn't here today with us, but, I don't know if anyone from General Assistance is here, but...
Deb Wood.
Deb Wood, okay. But again, I want to, I'll just read the resolution. Douglas County, Nebraska recognizes that its employees are county's most important asset and resource for providing quality service to the citizens of Douglas County, whereas the county wishes to recognize Ms. Cheryl Sweet of Douglas County General Assistance on her retirement and her dedicated service of 15 years to Douglas County, Nebraska. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that the county recognizes Ms. Cheryl Sweet for her dedicated service to the citizens of Douglas County, and thankfully presents this resolution as testimony thereof, and we will make sure that Deb gets this and gets it to Ms. Sweet.
Motion through.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. And this next one, I'm going to turn over to Commissioner Morgan.
Okay, I have two. First, a resolution that I'd like to read at this time, whereas the National Association of Counties, NACO, held its annual meeting in New Orleans, July 11th to 14th, and whereas NACO President Ricky Hakami appointed Commissioner Mary Ann Borgerson, our chairman, as NACO Health Service, to the Health Service Committee as chairman of that, and also, where Commissioner Mary Ann Borgerson was elected as president-elect in the Women of NACO, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby express congratulations to Commissioner Mary Ann Borgerson in her role as chairman of NACO Health Service Committee and president-elect of the Women of NACO. So, it's dated July 22nd, 2014. Want to congratulate you for your work, appreciate that.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We'll vote.
I don't know what I'm supposed to vote.
Yes, I guess.
Did it pass, Tom?
Motion passes.
All right, and then the other item I have is because we haven't met for a few weeks, and I thought every once in a while you should do something kind of nice for our chairperson. I have a little special cake that I had done for, that's pretty unique. Happy birthday, chairwoman.
Aw, thank you.
And, most importantly, it's gluten-free.
Oh, yay.
So, you can even eat it.
Well, thank you. How old am I?
She's 31. Been on the board most of her life.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Hold up your cake for Phil.
King on the board, and she's six.
Well, thank you.
You're most welcome, and...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, and I don't know that people realize, as being the chairperson or chairman of this board, how much extra time commitment is really made. I know I came up to a meeting yesterday afternoon with Mary Ann, with the group, and, I mean, it's a constant, almost total, full-time job, and I just want you to know, really appreciate the extra effort, the compassion and sensitivity you always show toward all the people that come before us and the groups that we meet with, so, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And does she sign her own resolution?
Yeah. Well, thank, I'm going to hang that with pride.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Morgan?
Quick comment about your appointment to the National Healthcare position. It's been very apparent to me, and I think all the other commissioners and people who pay attention to the county board, that Commissioner Borgerson is really an expert in healthcare field, and really knows her stuff, can cite all sorts of medical precedents and what the rules and everything, it's just amazing. And, so, I'm really proud that she has accepted this appointment to the National Association of County Officials, where she will have influence nationally over, I know, my wife got involved in national organizations and did some really terrific things, just because she dug in her heels and wouldn't give up, and you are kind of like the same person. So, anyhow, I really am pleased that you've done that, and I wish you a lot of success.
Thank you. And, you know, I really couldn't do the work that I do without the support of the board and our staff, and so, I think we make a good team, and I really am looking forward to really trying to make a difference on the national level with these health issues.
You will.
So, thank you very much.
Oh, Deb, we did the resolution on Cheryl Sweet, did you want to say anything? I read the resolution and said we would make sure that you got a good copy and got it to her. Okay, all right, thanks. Next is citizen comments, is there anyone wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Next, we have public hearings, there's a public hearing and a public approval resolution providing public approval for issuance of hospital authority, number one of Douglas County, Nebraska, of not to exceed $4 million aggregate principal amount of revenue bonds for the benefit of Quality Living, Inc. Steve Likes of Cutoc Rock is here, if we have any questions for Steve. This is a public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, close the public hearing, what is the will of the board?
Second.
Please vote. Next, we'll move to committees, the first is the finance, Commissioner Morgan, is there anything besides the budget report?
No, as presented, Joe, is there anything you want to mention that all were on track? So, that's it.
Okay. Next is a, under the community services, we have one item, the NRD presentation on the Papio Dam Site 15A project and proposed interlocal agreement with Douglas County concerning the roads, and I think they have a short presentation for us. You want to come forward? Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Madam Chairman and members of the commission, Mary Ann, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
It's nice to have that representation from our area, so...
Thanks.
My name is John Winkler, I'm the general manager of the Papio Missouri River NRD, address 8901 South 154th Street. I wanted to thank you for the invite today to do a presentation on one of our projects, Dam Site 15A, 168th and Fort, roughly the area. Marlon Peterman, my assistant manager, will do the presentations, and then obviously, will be available for any questions or comments. As part of this presentation, there's also before you an interlocal agreement with the NRD for the improvements to Ida Street, that's tied to this project, so, I'll turn it over to Marlon, and I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairwoman Borgerson and commissioners, let me see if I can get this PowerPoint working. Double click, double click isn't working. Do I have to take this one out here? I always love it when technology works.
As we always did, Commissioner Boyle, it could be the operator.
Do I have a mouse I can show? Will this, yeah, there it is, okay, great. Well, thank you again for having us here. We have been working on, as the NRD and the Papillion Creek Watershed Partnership have been working on projects involving the Papillion Creek Watershed, and today, just a little outline of what I'm going to present here, kind of the purpose of what we're doing, and some of the features of this Dam Site 15A project, the costs and partners involved, and then the interlocal agreement that John mentioned, and kind of our schedule of where we are today. The, maybe just to give you a little overall background, the, and there are some handouts we provided that have some maps that are a little bigger, if you'd like to study these in detail, but this is our Papillion Creek Watershed Management Plan for the structural aspects for flood control and water quality structures, involves 14 flood control structures and a dozen water quality basins, and is our overall watershed plan. The implementation plan that the partnership has been working on in the last five years are these three sites, one is WP5 on the lower part of the map, that's a flood control reservoir that's nearly complete down in Sarpy County near the Storm Chaser Stadium, Warner Park, and Zirinsky Basin 1, that is out near 192nd and Highway 6 and Center Road, that is a water quality basin to protect Zirinsky Lake, and then Dam Site 15A project that we're focusing on here today that's up near 168th and Fort Street. The watershed for 15A is located here, and you can see it's in the northwest kind of corner of the Omaha metro area, and this is a, kind of the master plan that we have developed, that is, that shows the facilities that are going to be constructed. So, I'll kind of be going over that and discussing the various aspects of that. First of all, the flood control reservoir itself, it controls 11 square miles of drainage that comes into the area and holds back that floodwaters, which is about 8% of a 135-square-mile watershed of the West Papillion Creek, so it provides flood control benefits through Omaha, Papillion, down through La Vista and Bellevue. Also, as a multi-purpose reservoir, it improves water quality in our watershed, enhances wildlife habitat, and provides public recreation, and the Game and Parks Commission, through their State Conference of Outdoor Recreation Plan, indicates that there is a great need for water-based recreation in the eastern Nebraska area. So, some of the features of the reservoir, this is kind of looking north, to get your orientation, Fort Street is in the bottom of the photo, 168th Street on the right, and 180th Street being the north-south street toward the left side of the drawing, and Ida Street is kind of the street that crosses there in the middle, that shows a little white bridge out there. So, this, I'll kind of be describing features around the reservoir here. First of all, the dam itself, which is located just north of Fort Street, and you can kind of see it highlighted here on the background, it's about 1,400 feet long, the lake will be about 220 acres, 4,000 acre feet of storage, and the NRD will maintain the dam structure itself. The recreational features at the reservoir, it's 720 acres overall parkland of that 220-acre lake, and the city of Omaha has a master plan, we've worked closely with them in developing an overall plan, not, all of that is being built at this time, but this area will be owned and managed by the city of Omaha. The recreation features, in a little more particular, we have a couple of access sites that we're going to construct now, and there may be more later, and they're again highlighted on the drawing up here that you can see. And the north and south, we call them access areas, the south one has the boat ramp, and there's, of course, restrooms and picnic tables and that sort of thing. There's a five-and-a-half mile, or 5.2 mile trail that goes around the entire lake, and there are a lot of fishery enhancements that are being built as part of the project that earthberms have learned new terms in the last few years, earthburn, breakwater, detties, shoaling areas, and so on, that all provide for great fishery. And then, the upstream, near 180th Street, where new 180th Street is a water quality basin that'll be built part of the project to help keep the lake clean, and we have there a trail that will go over the top of that, and it will provide about 20 years of sediment storage and then water quality cleanup of nutrients after that. A little bit about costs, this project is total cost of $43.6 million. You can see land rights and construction of all facilities are very close, about the same, a lot of cost there, 20 million each, and then, of course, the engineering to get it all done. Of that cost, this is a breakdown of how this particular site's funded, general funds and bond funds by the NRD provide a little over 40 million. The city of Omaha is providing 1.7 million down near the dam, we're putting in sewer line with the project through the structure and while we're building it, to make it more economical and better for safety. There's also, as I mentioned, a lot of fishering and boat docks, the Game and Parks Commission's providing 1.1 million dollars here to assist with all the fishery and boating activities, and then, you as Douglas County, in a contribution for all, for Ida Street embankments that are in addition to the project, and I'd like to go into that a little bit further, and that's what really is one of the main highlights of this interlocal agreement we're talking about. This interlocal agreement between the NRD and the county, we've been working closely with your engineering department and staff, the engineering office, and you can see here the gray areas and throughout, and these are the road areas that are dealt with in the agreement. Over here, HWS Cleveland Boulevard and new 180th Street, Ida Street here, 186th Street, State, 186th to the north. Breaking that down into this kind of probably three primary areas here, there's a, the Ida Street Bridge and roadway, and right-of-way acquisition involved with that, there is a future 180th Street, this road is not in at the present time, but this is the proposed alignment, again, working with your staff and with the city of Omaha, MAPPA and others come up with that alignment. And then, HWS Cleveland is also a future roadway over on the east side of the project. This gives you a little idea of some of the locations of those, and what this interlocal agreement proposes is that the right-of-way needs for the county roads will all be provided, donated to the county as part of this project, so 58 acres will be donated to the county that we've acquired, it's right up on the fringes of the project needs, and so, those will be right-of-ways for the roadways, like over here, HWS Cleveland, new 180th, and additional right-of-ways needed for widening roads in the future along Ida and 186th Street. So, Ida Street Bridge, this is the one area where there will be road construction, none of the other roads will actually involve any construction during the project, and this, this area will be a lot like... this, this area will be a lot like if you were familiar with Zerinsky Lake and 168th Street that crosses over Zerinsky Lake. That, the road comes down low and you have a lake on both sides to you. That's kind of what Ida Street's going to be like here. So in order to bring the current alignment, and this is like a cross-section, the road, Ida Street comes down to the bottom of the hill, and there's a bridge down here and up. This is going to be raised about 20 feet, 20 to 25 feet, in order to get the bridge above the roadway. And so in order to provide that profile, the existing two-lane bridge would be improved to this new bridge that would be installed as part of the project and provide the access over the, over the lake. And this blue area is kind of a picture of the permanent pool or the lake itself, and of course pedestrian access under that, like we have many of our bridges in the area. But the other feature with Ida Street, as we raise that roadway, and this is just a typical section at one location along the road, is the current roadway is down in this alignment here, and there's the pavement of the current road. The road that we will build in kind to replace that and bring up is a two-lane road that is this lighter-shaded embankment and place the new concrete surface or asphalt, whichever turns out to be selected. It would be located on this higher embankment. What's in working with the engineering department and the engineering office have, and are recommending is that the, that we place fill for a potential future four-lane divided roadway here, and place that at this time, and that the county reimburses for those costs to place that additional embankment at this time, which would be a savings in a better situation in the future, doing in the future. So this Ida Street Road and Bridge improvements, $3.1 million. Brand-new bridge, $1.2 million. New roadway section for 1.6. And here's that additional reimbursement for putting the additional fill in to provide it wide enough for a four-lane section to be built at some time in the future. Is that 245, currently estimated $245,000. So, schedule. Here's, here's kind of what we see right now. We, we're in the process of acquiring the right-of-way out here. Hope to complete that in December, and then start construction of the dam in the spring, and the recreation facilities, complete construction in the winter of '16, and the city of Omaha would open the park in the summer of 2017. That's my quick little program of here, and which are entertaining questions that you may have.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Tusha.
Thank you for the presentation, and thanks for laying everything out for us. That did help quite a bit. I just have one simple question. You're going to do the two lanes now with the possibility of four lanes later, but why don't you just involve it all and do all four lanes now instead of having another, you know, expense and tearing everything up and the whole issues when they're, you know, when it comes down to building extra lanes?
Well, I think it's in working with the, with the engineers department, that's what they're suggesting be done now.
Okay.
So that they know, I think probably there's, you know, in the future, you know exactly, maybe a little more what you're, what you want to install, and the grades may vary a little bit. And so putting the embankment fill in is the main thing now, and it's also a question of cost.
Which is the most part of it, okay, okay.
And there may be other participants in the cost of the paving later on, too, I think is another factor. But I, it's kind of what we, what we've worked out with, with the engineer.
Awesome, thanks. But again, thank you for the presentation, because what you showed us really helped and answered a lot of questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Very much for the presentation. I appreciate it. I have some questions. Is there, excuse my layman's approach to this, is there a levee involved in this anywhere, or is it a dam that you got at one end of the southern end, or what is it that you have?
Yeah, this is just a dam, an embankment, so earthen dam at the southern end at 168th and Fort approximately. And so no, there's not really a levee involved here. It'd just be a dam with a pool of water backed up behind it.
Okay. What's the difference between a dam and a levee? I mean, they're both earthen, and they hold water back?
Yeah, usually we think of dams as storing water. In other words, they hold water back. Levees more divert the water and divert it away. So we kind of think of it as dams are more probably keeping the water away from downstream, whereas levees help contain it as it goes downstream. So, little different function. Usually levees near the bottom of a watershed, and reservoirs near the top.
Do you see in the future costs to maintain this lake as occurred at Cunningham Lake?
I'm sorry?
As far as the dredging, Mike?
Dredging.
And that's, I think we've, we've gotten better at designing these things, and that's one of the, the functions of the water quality basins is to collect that sediment silt before it actually gets into the lake structure. And I think you see those at Cunningham Lake. In fact, there's plans to install those in the future, but that's why there, these designs are incorporated now to include those, so you won't see that type of maintenance in the future for, for the new reservoirs.
What kind of maintenance will there be, do you think? And if you could speak clear, close to the microphone, I'd appreciate it.
There's always standard maintenance on the dam structure. As Marlin stated, the city of Omaha will manage and maintain the park area and the lake, but the NRD will always manage and operate the dams, and we have dam safety standards that we have to comply with. And so there's always maintenance. There's filling holes. There's making sure that the riprap is maintained, and so there's always ongoing operation maintenance costs of those. But we found our experience that they're typically pretty static over time, and so, I mean, there's just the cost of doing business, like maintaining a park or a road or anything else, any other type of infrastructure.
Do you see, excuse my throat, do you see the construction of homes around the, around the lake?
The, according, the lake will have 100% public access. There will be no homes right on the lakeshore. Now, the NRD acquired 700 and some acres. Now, of course, there'll be no homes within that green space. Now, what people do outside of that area, it's their property, and it's up to them how they want to develop it. If they want to keep it ag land, or if they sell to developers for homes, you know, that's up to them. We have no say in that. But the immediate lake area and the 725 acres will be green space forever.
So how close do you expect the houses to be, or could they be?
Oh, in most locations, you're probably, I'm sorry, in most locations around the lake, we determine the perimeter, how far back from the permanent pool to acquire right-of-way is to an elevation that's equal to the top of the dam. And so it varies, and so we don't have an exact setback everywhere, because if the land's a little flatter, an elevation, of course, goes back a lot further. And if it's real steep, it, it is less. But in, I would guess that in most cases, you're talking at least a football field, or maybe two back away at the very closest.
Have any developers expressed an interest in developing the area?
They wouldn't have contacted, we, we don't know. That'd be maybe city planning, or the county would have better information of that, but they've not approached us. Obviously, they kind of couldn't develop within our, our project area.
When Jim Thompson was here, excuse me, last couple ways ago, excuse me, I brought up the subject of eminent domain. He said there would be none. And according to your minutes, I believe there was an eminent domain. A family had, thank you, had offered a, offered to keep their farmland under easement and continue farming it, and so they would farm it instead of sell it. And that was denied, and then no agreement was reached, and I, was it taken by eminent domain?
There have been no eminent domain proceedings to date, although even though authorization is given for that action, many times we find that the negotiations continue after that action, and many times we reach an agreement before the actual proceedings are initiated. So up to this point, no, no eminent domain has been authored, or initiated with the court. May have been authorized by the board, but again, those negotiations continue, and those happen for various reasons. Could be just a matter of not contacting or misunderstanding or whatever. So we will continue to move forward and negotiate with those parties that we haven't acquired yet. And our board goes to great lengths to not initiate that proceeding. And I think all public bodies that have that authority take it, don't take it lightly. They take it very seriously. And we only initiate that if, in fact, all other options have been exhausted. And so we're hopeful that we won't have any initiations of that action. And for example, our reservoir WP5 that Marla mentioned near Warner Park, we acquired that entire right-of-way with no eminent domain. So that's obviously a goal of our board and the staff not to initiate that.
I'm trying to read your minutes on the, my phone, and there's a, Section G, I'm not sure of what. It says that it is necessary that the district exercise the right of eminent domain granted to it by Nebraska Revised Statutes 2-3234 in order to acquire fee sample title to the acquisition parcels for the purpose of the project, and then it was resolved.
Again, that was to authorize that step.
Yeah.
And there's a filing that you have to go through.
That's ongoing, okay. Is MAPPA contributing anything to this at all? Are they involved in any funding or giving us anything? Were members?
They, they are members of our, or an advisory to our partnership, and they attend many of the Papio partnership meetings, but they, they aren't contributing any funds
No financial.
at this time.
Do we know, and maybe this is a question for Dan, but what the expense will be to the county to maintain these roads, particularly if we're talking about building or extending HW Cleveland, maybe I missed that, but I thought that's what she talked about before we commit to something like this.
Good morning. Dan, Kudlec County Engineers Office. The roads that are directly affected, that affect Douglas County Engineers Office are the county roads, the Ida Streets, you know, the Fort Streets, the 186 Streets. HWS Cleveland Boulevard will be incorporated more than likely at the time that the city catches up to this area of Douglas County. It'll just be part of the planning process and development process through normal procedures the city requires. It would not end up being a county road. 180th Street, however, of course, is a section-lined road, and the lake will be inundating that section-lined road. And that is why we have worked diligently with the NRD and MAPPA and the city of Omaha to require that 180th Street be protected, and they came up with, with our approval in concurrence to realignment. That road right-of-way will be set aside for the public, basically, Douglas County at this time, but it could end up being in the city of Omaha, actually, before it is approved, Mike and commissioners. The cost of maintaining these roads would be absorbed into the county engineer's budget. Other than HWS Cleveland Boulevard, that would not ever be a county road. There's an exception there in regard to the cost. That would be absorbed into either the city of Omaha or some other development cost. You know, we would have these costs anyway. You know, those roads are there today, and so we see it as just a matter of coordinating it. As far as the costs are concerned, it would just be absorbed into our normal routine budgetary process, Commissioner.
Are you building the bridge over Ida, on Ida?
The project will be building the bridge. It's replacing an existing bridge in kind, two-lane to two-lane bridge. What Commissioner Tusha might be questioning was why not build the whole thing now. What we are asking him to do is align the new two-lane bridge in such a manner that it will not have to be torn down in the future. It would be what we call a companion bridge, and it'll be offset, I believe, to the north from the existing location to allow for the second bridge to be built on the south side of that bridge in the future when the traffic warrants it. The road itself is a two-lane road, and of course, it would be tore up anyway when we came to a four-lane project. So in my mind, at least, that's a wash. You know, the road itself and the bridge will be there for many, many years in the future. The bridge will be built and completed as part of this project, Commissioner.
Thank you. I have a couple more questions. There's a, in these notes, and it is difficult to read them on a telephone the size of that. First of all, I would, I would like to get on your list of sending your minutes out.
Sure.
If you do that, send it to the county address. It'd be great.
Okay.
But there's a name in here that I can't find right at the moment, but, excuse me, the name is Michelle Thompson, and she had track six, and it was described as a spillway, and that's the one that won the easement that was denied. And there was, I thought there was a vote that condemned it from six to three to two, six to three vote with two abstentions.
I believe, and again, I have to go through the, but I believe that vote was for just more than that track. There was a couple of the tracks that were involved in that as well as that, correct?
But that wasn't a condemnation vote. That wasn't a condemnation vote.
It was a condemnation vote to, to authorize the proceedings. It didn't, we didn't initiate those, yes, yes.
Started the process.
So if the ongoing negotiations continue with that particular landowner, which obviously I can't get into details.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
I could indicate that I, I believe we probably have, yeah, can't say it too far, but I believe we've come to agreement with that landowner.
Okay. I had a question about some of the, just, and maybe I'm not, I should have shown this to PJ Morgan, because he can rattle these things off in his head, giving the percentage costs and so forth. But track one was, cost 140, you paid $144,285 for it, it was nine, 9.6 acres. Tracks 13 to 15, you paid five point, almost five and a half million dollars for 129 acres. What are you supposed to deal is? You just negotiated really well with the first one, and that's so hot with the second one?
Obviously, when we go to acquire right-of-way, I think county is similar. We hire a certified appraiser, and they appraise the property for us, so we have a baseline to start the negotiations. So that, though those numbers, although different, obviously were concurred by a certified appraiser, that there may have been a per acre difference for whatever reason. If it was infrastructure, if it was in the bottom of a particular creek, depending on the value of the property. So it wasn't just that they were good negotiators, it was that there was a true value difference between the two parcels or the three parcels or whatever. So we found in this particular instance that the property closest to Ida Street had a higher value than the ones further north. And obviously, I'm not a certified appraiser, so I can't exactly state what he, the difference was, but obviously, that's why we hire those professionals that can give us that advice. And when we go to the landowner, we have that, that documentation to start our negotiations. We encourage them to also seek counsel and to seek appraisals and to show us those. And if there's differences, then that's part of the negotiation of working those out. So it was just a difference of value of property.
Is it possible for you to show me on that, what you have on the screen, where track one was and, or is, and where tracks 13 to 15 are, do you know?
I don't know if we have a track map, but we probably can.
I can give you probably this one map.
Right there?
This, yeah, this one that has the roads on. The track numbers, the, excuse me, Commissioner, the, the track numbers primarily went from, from south to north, so the, the tracks one were, were down here, and the upper tracks are at the, at the north and outer ends. That's wrong? Other way. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's why we have staff.
I got a cue from the staff here that it's, it's the other way around.
Okay.
In fact, boy, those little things you write, see there are track numbers, but it, I guess it was ones that were at the north end and, and, and this was like 17 and 18 and I think 19 was a little piece here. But yeah, it was from the north to the south.
And this was a little bit unique, I forgot to mention, in that there, this, properties were in different school districts. And that also impacts property evaluations.
Okay.
And this, we, we've acquired some right-of-way for, for dams, of course, and, and levees and other projects, but this really did present us quite a challenge here with the fact that the appraisers came up with quite a difference in value. And so, the value of the property at the north end here is, is very much less than what it is now at the south end. And going to talk to landowners that talk to each other and say, "Down here, they're getting offered this and up here, they're getting offered half of that," or whatever, is, that was really, really a challenge and is, continues to be. But I think we've, as John mentioned, we've suggested they get appraisals and some of them have. And they've never shown them to us because I think what they found was our appraiser did a pretty good job. But, so we've settled most of these and we do have a few left primarily in this middle area here, but we've settled some on the outsides and down south.
Let me ask a question that's a little bit, maybe a little bit off the beam, but this operation that you have at this lake seems far superior to some that you've had in the past. Correct me if I'm wrong, but is there limited access to some of the dams that you've constructed like Bennington? And I know there's homes right on the water and
Right.
People are not going to allow scrubby looking people to walk in there with fishing poles and sit in their lawn chairs and fish. So, I mean, what, what's the difference? What's happened?
Well, I, I think it's, in that particular instance, it was a, it was a, I would say a task to work with the development community. And, you know, there was a number of positive benefits that came out of that. Obviously, the cost, it was a reduced cost to the district to construct the lake and reservoir. And there was also some additional property that was donated to the Bennington School District for their new school. Also, there was another lake that's built, a water quality basin that was built, that was donated by the developers as far as the property to do that. But I think the, the focus now, and ever since I've become general manager, this was, that was constructed before my time, but I think the focus of our board and, and our staff now is 100% public access. And if you remember the bill, the bonding bill that was passed in '09, that was codified into state statute that any project that we construct over 20 surface acres has to be 100% public access. And so, just by us codifying that in state law, you will not see another project like that. And so, obviously, anything that we construct now will have 100% public access and will remain public property far into the future.
Do you have any lakes that are completely closed to the public?
Well, there are, we have 100 small dams that we've built on farmers' properties throughout the district and they're built on an easement. Yeah, there's no access to the public.
Okay.
You know, they're small, small ponds. We've worked with the rural agricultural community throughout the district for a great, well, all of our time. And most of those small little ponds are not public access. The, the ones that we've acquired the property on are, are the ones that you need to own the land in order to allow the public out there.
I would think any of these, obviously, these larger reservoirs, anything over 20 surface acres has to have the, the public access. And another reason why we construct the, the boat ramps and the fishing piers and the trails, obviously, you have a flood control reservoir, you want to create an amenity for the community. I've been to many parts of the country that they build reservoirs or, and they fence them off. And so, it's a nice body of water and it does its job as a flood control reservoir, but there's really no access for the public. And I, so I think that's what the, our board has been very diligent in creating multipurpose type of facilities. They do their job as flood control, but they also have a secondary benefit as providing recreation opportunities to, to the, the community. We, we've got a recent number of visitors by the, the Corps of Engineers and, and just Worspan Lake, it gets 400,000 visitors a year. That's not counting, is there more?
Actually, I got an update. The Papio lakes that are here, we're getting three-quarters of a million people visit those a year. It's, it's astounding. I didn't even think the numbers were that high, but the Corps of Engineers actually tracks that. And we see that type of visitation here.
Well, I mean, you know, I, I think you know that this board has taken a position in opposition to this, these kinds of lakes being built representing flood control. You know, they just, and I've done, I've got a slew of information that I'm getting ready to pass out to you and your board about how, when there's water held in a, in a lake and you have these heavy downpours, that the only thing that can happen, there's two things that can happen generally. One is the dam breaks and the water comes out, or it just simply goes over the top. And so, we don't, we don't really see these as, as preventing dam, preventing flooding. And there's not that we're against, you know, it's hard to be against a million and a half people coming up and enjoying water in this part of the state. We're not opposed to that, obviously, but we really wish that you would do something like, we just approved on our consent agenda, that we authorize the board chair to sign an agreement with the next phase environmental ink for extension office stormwater drainage improvements. It's low impact development that you're beginning to see around the area that serves the purpose of stopping, of really stopping flood and slowing down the water and getting it back into the ground. That's, that's my sermon, but that's why I ask these questions. I, we have, you know, because of the language in LP 160, which was put in and said that, you know, a county can veto any dam that's exclusively, exclusively built or to propose to be built in their territory. And none of, none of your dams are exclusively in Douglas County, which I'll be honest, I don't think it's an accident. I think you know that you probably have a worse time than you're having today if you were to propose it. But, you know, I mean, it, it's a lot better than you were doing, I'll tell you the truth. That's how I feel. And I'm really happy that people are using the dams. That's, that's a big deal. Make access for the public, get people out there fishing, boating, that's non-wake and all that other stuff, whatever you can do. Excuse me. So, I'll, I'll get off my high horse and I appreciate your putting up with my questioning.
Anytime.
I respect, I respect the work that you do and I intend to gas up my car a couple of times and drive on and look at that project.
Okay, we'll give it to you. Just, thank you, Commissioner Boyle. One thing that, and in fact, we, we verified this, we, in the Papio reservoir system, we've never had a, a levy over, or excuse me, a reservoir over top, a dam, or even get into the auxiliary spillway. So, we've, we've been very fortunate. We've never had a dam failure in our district. And also, during these last two storm events in June, they were well-publicized, obviously, we're seeing a system that's taxed. We've had parts of our levees that were overtopped in the Belleville area that have never happened in 40 years. And, and I rely on these guys for that historical perspective, but some of these reservoirs like Worspan and Zarinski and that, they'll go, they'll rise anywhere from three to five feet in a rain event like that. So, they're withholding that volume of water. And they're not even close to going over the auxiliary spillway, but that's, if you have a 200 acre lake that goes up three to five feet in a 24-hour period, that's a huge, huge volume of water. And if you already have a system that can't hold anymore, we, we maybe had a 20-year event in June, that's not even close to a 100-year event. And we're seeing a system that's stretched to the max. And so, that's why we're building these things. And I appreciate the comments that we're doing things better. And I don't know if we'll ever get to the point where they're 100%, but we, we are trying. And, and we have a mission and we're trying to fulfill that. So, I wanted to thank you all for your time and effort and.
I want to personally thank you for coming and making an excellent presentation and I wish you good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tusha?
I have a question for Dan. On this bridge over Ida Street, am I going to assume that this was eventually on your radar to maybe redo or fix or whatever? Or was this not there? But either way, with this new bridge, is this going to be federally funded at all? Or is this going to have to eventually come out of the budget?
You know, of course, all of our bridges are on the long-range horizon for our office, you know, some are sooner than others. This particular bridge, I think, was built in the 80s, you know, so it had some life expectancy left in it. However, the NRD is replacing that bridge in kind at no cost to Douglas County
Okay.
With this new bridge. So, we feel that's, that's reasonable. And what we're going to be presenting to you, I believe as early as next week, is the interlocal agreement that will allow us to plan for the future on all of these roads and coordinate as best we can on all of these county roads so that the costs will be minimal. You know, we won't have to be filling embankment in a existing water body, as an example, on Ida Street, which is close to being impossible probably in today's regulatory society. So, these are important decisions that we have to make, we feel, and, and we've been working with NRD staff for, I believe, up to eight years now. We actually started in 2006, according to my notes. So, this isn't a flippant decisions. We've worked diligently and had numerous meetings with the, the NRD and the City of Omaha to come up with what we all feel is in everyone's best interest.
So, this is an advantage for us with this particular bridge?
Very much an advantage in regard to the bridge itself and also, more importantly, is protecting the right-of-way in the future. The NRD is donating to the county road system about 38 acres, according to our calculation, most, most of which is 180th Street. So, that is a critical fact that will protect our transportation system into the foreseeable future.
So, can you talk to them and see if there's other bridges that you can kind of count off on?
I'll talk to, talk to them out in the hallway.
Oh, okay, sounds good. Thanks for your information.
You're welcome. Thank you, commissioners.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes. I do plan to support the project. I'm going to reverse my last vote, but I do have some questions. What fund will the $245,000 come out of? Will that be the road funds?
That would come out of the County Engineers' Road Fund Budget, yes, sir.
Okay, I, I thought so. And where will public access be to this park and dam?
No, I didn't hear what you said.
Second. Hold on. Well, use, excuse me again, Marlon Peterman, using this, this point of the, the two access locations right now, one is here off of Ida Street and one is down here off of Fort Street. So, those are the two access points that would be indicated right now.
And what about in the future?
I think that would be up to the City of Omaha as the operator of this area. And I would anticipate as they plan further that there will be many other access points, but these are the two that would be installed immediately.
Now, what happens? Yeah, I don't know who is downstream. Should, should in the rare instance the dam be breached or fail, who gets flooded?
Well, we, each, each reservoir that is, is built in Nebraska up to a certain size has, requires an emergency action plan. And, and that's being prepared for this particular structure and, and being submitted. But certainly, there would be, there's residences downstream, there's businesses, there's property, there's bridges. And that's why we're really, you know, I think, very happy to say that we design these to the highest standard possible. And, and the fact that actually, they're designed for 30 inches of rain in 24 hours.
Wow, okay. That kind of answers my next question, which is going to be, how many feet, feet acres of water would, it would, but if it's 30 inches of rain, that's, that's not just direct rain, that's including the drainage too.
Oh, yes, that includes the drainage.
I figured that, I just wanted to confirm. And now, you mentioned the City of Omaha taking over the operation and maintenance. Any estimate what the cost of citizens of Omaha for maintenance and operations of the park?
Don't have a good estimate there that, yeah, you'd really need to talk to them. I, you know, they're, I'm sure they, well, I really don't have a good handle on that, I'm sorry.
Knowing how the city works, I bet they don't have a good handle on it either.
No comment, Commissioner.
Thank you. I just, I brought that up so that the citizens will know there is a cost to it, you know, and they don't seem to know. Yes, Mr. Green?
If I may take a moment of your time.
Absolutely. Can you get to the microphone?
Some of the things that.
Bill? Bill, there you go.
Some, I'm not used to this anymore.
I know.
I'm Bill Green with the County Engineers' Office. Years ago, when I was in charge of that office, the Corps of Engineers with the City of Omaha and Douglas County joined together in developing a channel improvement on the Little Papio Creek, recognizing that, incidentally, in those days, long before any of you were born, the city limit, city limits was 72nd Street. It was an irregular line, but potentially, the, the major difficulty with the flood was to be contained in that area between Blondo and as far south as Q Street. So, the county board in their wisdom agreed to go along as the sponsoring agent with the Corps of Engineers and I encouraged the City of Omaha to join us. Just as the project was to be developed, there was a new mayor elected to the City of Omaha, Al Sorensen. And Al called me in, he said, "Bill," he said, "I don't think we're going to contribute our share." And I said, "Do you realize what this will do to the project?" I said, "It'll fall on its face because we have a joint agreement with the Corps of Engineers, Douglas County and the City of Omaha." He said, "Well, our funds are, are very tight." And he said, "I just don't think we can join you." So, being an Irishman and not being used to say, taking no for an answer, I continued to harass Al. After probably eight or 10 discussions on the phone, at lunch, I convinced him he should join the project and come in with the financing. That very same year, before the contract was let, that area was flooded. Ross's Steakhouse, all of those facilities in that area exarbened. I had a phone call from Al and he said, "Thank you, you extended my political career." So, but originally, the Papio Channel Improvement, along with the future development of Cunningham Lake, was started many, many, many years ago. When the NRD Board was created through the state, state legislature, I was assigned by the county commissioners to sit on that county, on that board. So, I've kind of kept an eye on them over the years and was very much impressed with some of the work they've done. My chief interest at this point in time is the fact that the county, the County Engineers' Office is going to receive some favorable attention with reference to the grading of the road systems and the future development of that particular area, which still falls in our jurisdiction. And I, I thought it would be appropriate if I mentioned some of the background on the history of channel improvement.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well...
Well, I really want to thank, I really want to thank Commissioner Green for stepping forward. It really helps put things in focus, and you're a real asset to our community to give us this history, your wealth of knowledge, and we owe a debt of gratitude to you and the other commissioners, people like Dan Lynch and John Collister, Jack Kavanaugh, and a whole slew of people that really built the foundation for where the county is today. And I'm very impressed with the history you gave us, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Well said, Mike. I, too, want to thank the NRD for coming today, but also the work, you know, sometimes these projects, as this one did, comes across, and we really don't have the details or the background of what's all been done or the details of the project. And so, once it's all put into perspective, sometimes it's easier to understand. So I think maybe we need to work a little better with communication to get ahead of the game when these projects are happening within Douglas County. That might help some of the misunderstandings that have occurred. But I do appreciate you coming. This is obviously going to be an asset to the public once completed, and I do appreciate the cooperation that you've had with our Roads Department in making it a positive for the Douglas County roads. So, thank you, and this is, this is a good project.
Well, you're welcome, and likewise. And we, we should do a better job of coming to your board meetings, if you'll have us, and updating you on projects that are going on, especially after storm events and things like that. We can share a lot of information. Appreciate your time.
I do have one question off of this dam, the one that you were talking about by Warner Park.
Yes.
Is that going to be just one of those dams, or is it going to be a public access lake as well?
It's a public, just like this, it's just smaller. And it's, it'll be open in the spring of next year. So it's substantially completed now and starting to fill.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Anyone from the public would like to speak on this? Okay. Next is Human Resources, and we have the weekly personnel report from Civil Service as presented, unless there's any questions. We have the weekly CAO report on staff assaults.
Nothing to report.
And under legislative issues, there is a presentation that the city wants to give us on land banks.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Marty Barnhart.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Nice to be back. Commissioners, my address is 1304 South 97th Street here in Omaha. I am here today, not acting on any behest of the City of Omaha by way, by way of anything in a permanent fashion or anything representative, but Ben Gray has asked me to come and make a presentation to you, just so you would know what is happening today at the City Council meeting in regard to land banks. This presentation is very short, but let me read it for you. Omaha is facing a crisis vacant, abandoned, and tax delinquent lots and structures litter our city, resulting in depressed property values and loss of property taxes. The perceived and lack of real investment compounds feelings of despair and poor self-image in many of the hardest-hit neighborhoods. These conditions create a haven for crime and present significant challenges to attaining a good quality of life. This was the testimony of our city 41 years ago in 1973. In 1973, the problem of tax delinquency was plaguing Omaha and Douglas County. At that time, thousands of property, where properties were tax delinquent and uncollected. The Nebraska Legislature passed LB 73 and allowed municipalities to form a land utilization authority. That was Legislative Statute 773201 through 13. The purpose of the LRA was to foster the public purpose of returning land, which was in a non-revenue, non-revenue generating, non-tax-producing status to effective utilization in order to provide housing, new industry, and jobs for the citizens of the county and new tax revenue also for the county. The authority, now known as a commission, has served us well by returning over 15,000 parcels to the tax rolls and providing new housing, new industry, and jobs for the citizens of Douglas County. By interlocal agreement, the commission has also served Sarpy, Thurston, and Odo Counties here in Nebraska, returning tax delinquent properties also to their tax rolls. Today, we face a new problem in our city. Currently, more than 7,000 parcels in Omaha have some level of code violations, including more than 700 structures with demolition orders and nearly 4,000 parcels with an unsafe or unfit designation, meaning they are uninhabitable and in need of significant repair. More than half of these violations are concentrated in neighborhoods east of 42nd in north, south, and midtown Omaha. There are today more than 25,000 vacant lots here in Douglas County. These include new lots for building. And as of June 2013, delinquent property taxes and special assessments totaled nearly 1.4 million. According to the Center of Community Progress, different combinations of these conditions lower nearby property values anywhere between 2.1 and 9.4 percent. One way to address this new code enforcement challenge is to create an agency that can acquire these properties that are dead to the marketplace and figure out a way to get them back to building neighborhoods. A municipal land bank is what is on the agenda this afternoon. In the spring of 2013, the Nebraska Legislature passed the Nebraska Municipal Land Bank Act, thus enabling the City of Omaha and 30 other cities in Nebraska to create a local land bank. The mission of the Omaha Municipal Land Bank is to facilitate the return of vacant, abandoned, and tax-delinquent property to a productive use. Ultimately, through coordinating partnerships around specific projects, the Omaha Municipal Land Bank will enable redevelopment. The land bank is a public entity with a public purpose governed by a publicly-appointed board of directors. The land bank is not a developer, neither is a public housing authority or a developmental authority. The ordinance today that is before the City Council on their agenda this afternoon would allow for the formation of the Omaha Municipal Land Bank. If passed, it will have its own board, a seven-member board that is appointed by the mayor and affirmed by the City Council, and also ex-official members from the public and private sectors to be able to acquire tax-delinquent property from tax lien and tax foreclosure sales according to their statutory redemption periods. And it would also have the authority to acquire code and condemnation properties for the resale to private, nonprofit, and governmental entities. The LRC will be asked to combine their inventory and operations with the new land bank. The formation of a land bank here in Omaha would help solve our current crisis and answer the question, what can be done about code and condemnation properties? These properties would be acquired, placed into a public inventory, and sold for restoring many areas in our city and whole neighborhoods in our community. Commissioners, many of you know that I served the Land Realization Commission from 1987 until 2000. I was their executive director, and when I left in that year, Dave Schreiner became the new director of the LRC and has continued to serve well and serve faithfully. But we, in essence, worked ourselves out of a job. In 1987, when I took over the operation, we had 3,000 properties in inventory, and as we worked through those years, those next 13 years, our staff effectively worked our way out of a job. And I left in 2000 because of other opportunities I had, leaving Dave and an associate in charge of the agency. But in all those years, the same question came to my desk over and over. Can we give you code and condemnation properties? Would you sell them for us? And of course, the answer was affirmative. We'd love to sell them, but there was no, no way statutorily that we could take those properties and have any kind of clear title to be able to sell those properties nor any monies or dollars to be able to acquire them because of the LRC statute as it stood in that day. So the difference, again, the LRC would receive properties by way of tax foreclosure, inventory them and sell them. The difference is the land bank would be able to go out and acquire properties, not just receive them, but acquire them, both through to the tax foreclosure as we do today, but also go out and seek to acquire them on the public market or the private market space, seek to purchase them, and then seek to bring developers to the table to redevelop those properties and improve entire neighborhoods. Questions, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I appreciate the presentation, and I agree with it. I have some questions about it. From what I understand, Amy Melton is on the City Council of Omaha, and she's, has quite a bit, quite a few questions about what this is all about.
Yes.
And I received a phone call from a group of people who, I guess I describe them as landlords, who are concerned about what's going on, you know, that this is kind of a taking, that the city is doing something they don't like. I favor the plan. I haven't read it, I shouldn't say that I haven't read it, but I just generally favor what's taking place. In the eighties, when I was in the mayor's office, we proposed, we were very frustrated by trying to get control of property that was sitting there dilapidated, waiting for the copper and everything else to be stolen and stripped, and then the house becomes worthless. And we started a program that was modeled after a program in Baltimore that was urban homesteaded, urban homesteading, and we took certain homes, and we, I hope, I wish this could be a part of the process, we took homes that had a chance to be rehabbed, and we sold them for a dollar. And the only requirement was that the person who bought it has to own it, not live in it, but own it for three years. They have to bring it up to city code even, and if their finances are such they can't afford it, it would be at no interest. And we had several good adventures with that. One of the memories I have of that is I was walking out of the courthouse years later, after doing some legal work, and a young man stopped me, and he told me that his family was the first family that got a house for a dollar. And he said, "We had been living in a car. There were three children and a mother and a father living in a car, and they were lucky on the lottery and got that house." So that's motivation enough for me to support this, and that's the sort of thing that can happen. The difficulty is how, you know, you run into, property rights are guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States. How do you, how do you overcome that? Because taking property is difficult. You know, and it can be, you know, and redeeming property, you can go ahead and acquire it through these tax sales, but then they're subject to being redeemed for a period of years, so that places them in limbo, and they could be destroyed in the meantime. I don't know, I mean, I'd love to see it work. One of the problems that, when I was a board member of Holy Name Housing Corporation for nearly 20 years, one of the problems that toward the end of, before I left, was that the Holy Name Housing could not afford to buy any lots from the city. They were too expensive. And we couldn't afford to buy lots to build houses, which is nuts. And because we used to build them for, we used to buy the lots for $50 apiece. And so we had a fundraising thing, and we raised some money, and we were using it to buy lots. But that, that's a real problem for, I would think, for people like Mike Maroney and Holy Name Housing Corporation, which I hope is, isn't a problem. So, you know, I'm really for it, I'd like to see this happen. I don't know, the opposition was, had some concerns that there was some kind of a takeover going on, and Councilmember Melton, apparently, is the person who will be talking about that today. So I do have a question. What happens to the LRC? Does Dave become a member of the, of the Omaha Municipal Land Bank?
At this juncture, the seven-member board will need to be appointed by the mayor and affirmed by the City Council, and thereafter, they'll have to decide who they want to have as their staff.
Okay.
So it'll be a request that'll be made from that board to the LRC, asking them to meld their inventory and possibly operations into the land bank, and then thereafter, they'll have to decide who they want as their executive director and what they want as their staff.
Okay, so the county board is really a spectator in all this event, but we appreciate, of course, we do have the office that's involved, but I appreciate being brought up to date, and I'll be very interested to see what the City Council does on this and the questions that they ask.
Very good.
Thanks a lot, and I thank you for your service to Douglas County. It was extraordinary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tusha.
Quick question. If it turns out that all this is going through and you guys are able to acquire all these other properties out there, do you get first bid on this, or do you stand in line with the whole bidding process?
There are two different ways, actually, three different ways to bid. Number one, in regard to a tax lien or a tax foreclosure sale, the land bank can come to the table like any other bidder and bid for the property, either online or in a round-robin fashion. Secondarily, the statute provides for what's called an automatic bid, that the land bank can look for properties that may be contiguous or may be within a certain genre of what the statute provides, either it's ready to be demolished or in some way it's needing something that obviously code enforcement has shown. And if those criterias, which there are 11 of those, match, then the land bank can produce an automatic bid by resolution of their board. In knowing tax lien certificate sales, Commissioner, I know from my own experience of investing and working with investors that these properties that are tax lien sales are the poorest and the worst properties, and the investors do not want them. So the outcry that I've heard about those properties being taken off the block really is a non-event, because the investors look at these and say, "We're not going to bid anyway," because they're looking for the opportunity to receive 14 percent interest on their monies over a three-year time, whereas the land bank would pull them off the inventory, and therefore, they wouldn't even be a part of the sale, either in a tax lien or a tax foreclosure situation. Third, and again, we've got a regular bid, we've got an automatic bid, but third, the land bank would have to approach the present owners of distressed properties and seek to negotiate a sale with them. So the land bank's going to have to operate just like the private sector does. By, by having a title search done, by having an appraisal done on the property, then approaching the owners of record if they can be found and seeking to acquire these properties.
So on that note, I mean, what happens, I mean, there's a lot of just little parcels all over Omaha, especially north and south.
Yes.
What happens if you're not able to find the landowner or, or they don't want to give it up? It just sits there then?
It can just sit there. It may continue to languish as it does. Foreclosure could take place, and as you know, that process is a long process.
Yes, I do.
Both to get it into foreclosure and then because of those statutory redemption periods, it could take five to seven years before it ever passes through for the land bank to be either a bidder at the tax foreclosure sale or have the opportunity to obtain the property. If the LRC melds its operations into the land bank, the land bank would then become the unspoken, non-competitive bidder at the tax foreclosure sales. Not the tax lien sales, but after foreclosure takes place, the land bank would become then that unspoken, non-competitive bidder.
Really?
In the case of the public standing away. And quite often, the public will stand away because of the high cost of taxes against the property, lien problems, or ownership problems that are there. And then, of course, the two-year redemption period would have to take place, and before any right of title could be passed or inventory could be done, a confirmation hearing in district court would have to take place, and the owner will be given one more right to come in and redeem their property if they choose to do so.
Wow, long process then.
It is a very long process.
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I know that I'm known for telling stories, and people go, "Oh, my God, not another one." But I do have to tell you something fun, that I was very frustrated, as were people living on the north side, with weeds getting to be, you know, three and four feet high. And so the first thing that we did was something that I had seen in Philadelphia, near the home of Benjamin Franklin, which is really nothing much to see. But the street was, I've never seen a street like it. I mean, there were potholes that were two feet deep, and they were, it was horrible. And way up high was a sign that said, "Rough Street, call Philadelphia Department of Road," or, excuse me, Pennsylvania Department of Roads, and it had their 800 number. So I thought, that's a darn good idea. So we had signs way too high so they couldn't be manipulated, and it said, "Weeds, too high, call," and we put the person's name and San Diego and their phone number, and it worked. People would get calls in the middle of night, San Diego saying, "Hey, your weeds are too high on 33rd and Pratt." And they got tired of getting the calls. It was kind of fun. Anyway, it's a big job that's going on, and so it's really, it's really important, and it is a struggle. I think the questions that Commissioner Tusha asked are right on point, and the answers you gave, I think, are right on point. Good luck. It's going to be a dandy.
What happens to the property, which, my understanding is there aren't any right now outside of the city limits that are within the LRC currently?
Right.
But just say that in the future, there's county property. Does, who, then, what happens to that?
The land bank does not have jurisdiction outside the municipality of the City of Omaha. So if there's property that is available, whether it be by code and condemnation or taxes that are due and delinquent, there may need to be an interlocal agreement between the land bank and the LRC, asking for those properties that would have gone to them to go right on into the land bank so they can be overseen. In talking to the council with the LRC, Bernie Mambouquette, I spoke to him about that on Friday where I made a presentation to them, and he indicated that may be something that could be in the future in order to protect those properties for your interest here in Douglas County.
But the LRC is going to be nonexistent?
That's correct. And that's why it's something that's complicated, to say the least.
Unless, I mean, we've talked over the years of that function, which I know Dave pretty is under the county attorneys or within the county attorney. pretty is under the county attorneys or within the county attorneys, that the county attorney's section could take that over.
Correct.
In some way, shape, or form, not be a true LRC, if you will, but.
Right.
I don't know legally how that would be maintained.
It could also be, that it could be that the LRC may remain in force only for properties like that in some form as well. But those are discussions that'll have to be done with the new land bank board if it's formed, and as well with the LRC board as they stand currently.
We should probably be having those discussions sooner rather than.
Correct.
Later would be my guess.
I agree.
Okay. Well, thank you for, oh, one other question. Where does the city get the money to buy or acquire, now that they can not just receive, but acquire?
Right.
Is this general fund money that they'll be using, or is it money from what?
There is a line item in the city budget that currently stands in the proposed 2015 budget today, and that comes out of the code enforcement budget. So, partial money from code enforcement will be, begin to be funneled toward the land bank. Secondarily, foundations and private entities will be approached, asking to help fund the land bank over the first one to three years, so that they could have the monies they need to begin to acquire properties. Third, the land bank has the opportunity, if it sells property, to retain fifty percent of the taxes on that property for the next five years after its sale. So, there would be an ongoing revenue stream that way. And then last, the land bank obviously will have property, monies coming from the sale of properties, and then it can lease or rent properties as well for a period of twelve months maximum, unless there's a lease that already pertained to the property prior to that, that they take over. But generally speaking, by way of sale of property, that fourth mechanism and rents and leases of property over the, over a one-year period would be another funding source. So, it's, again, it's going to be, it's going to be a real buildup, much like what the LRC had in nineteen eighty-seven when I took it over. There was a glut of properties, and we had fifty thousand dollars to work with, but we had revenue beginning immediately because of sale of properties. Here, it's going to be acquisition of those properties and monies that need to be banked first before it happens.
Okay. Thank you. No other questions or comments? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, too.
If anybody does have, I guess I'll ask right now the county attorney to maybe have a further discussion with us about properties outside of the city limits and what happens when this thing is formed over on the city side. And then, if anybody else has any other questions, just let us know, but Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I, I think under some legislation that was passed two, three years ago, that the state permits local governments to do interlocal agreements, and then the entity that does the agreement say that we do one with the city of Omaha, that on this subject, that we are then given the authority that they have, that it transfers to us so we can do what they're doing. I believe there was a statute that did that, that transferred, you know, even with the school districts and all sorts of things, so that it encouraged cooperation and cutting down, breaking down some of these walls. We need to look into that.
Yeah. Okay. Great.
That may be the solution.
Yeah, thanks. No other legislative issues? I will just remind you that I do have the, I've been invited to be on that conference call with Senator Avery and Senator Camp, Crawford have taken a particular interest in the unfunded mandates on counties. And they put forth a few items, and I did ask others for what they're, you know, what they think we should talk about. And so, if there's any others you want to talk about, let me know, but I think it's a positive that we have not only one, but two senators that are at least willing to have a conversation with us. I also will pull out what we used at the Tax Modernization Committee, where we gave, I think it was ten or eleven items, Marcos will remember, of what, suggestions we had of what the state should pay for to eliminate the cost on local government. So, we'll talk about that as, as well, but, so I'm kind of excited, you know, I'm, again, as everybody says, I'm probably looking through my rosy tinted glasses a little too much on this one, but I see possibilities occurring with this, that at least there's, there's an interest. I am also going to be meeting with other people as part of the NACO Board, which Commissioner Tusha has asked me to participate in, in her place, is the meeting with the Council on State Governments that's looking at the prison reform that met with our Corrections Department. They're now going to meet with county personnel down at the, down at NACO this week, and I'll be in attendance to that to at least give some input and find out a little bit more about what they're thinking. I also had a conversation with Mike Myers yesterday, that I think it's time for us to kind of do a little bit, put our show on the road with our re-entry initiative. And I've contacted Larry Dix from NACO, saying, you know, "We have district meetings, we have the county board workshop, and then we have our annual meeting coming up in December, might be too late," but, but I really think we should go and do a presentation about what we have going on here, because we could actually, it could become a regional thing.
Right.
It could become more cooperative with other counties. It could be replicated out in the western part, and it blends very well with what the state is trying to do with their reforms. So, I think we just need to kind of put our show on the road, if you will, and let them know what we're doing here, so. So, it's a lot of stuff going on.
I was going to mention one thing to you, just as a thought, and I know you're working on it. We're going to have probably a little bit of a morning breakfast with the state senators, maybe in September, so that it's kind of when they're not too busy, or maybe in August, you decide that, or early October, something before, and invite the different candidates instead of doing it after the election. And then I thought, and this is totally up to you, I'm not saying we should do it, but I'm great if you do do it, and if you don't, fine. Maybe, we know there's a chance we're going to have, for sure, a new county board member. I thought you may invite both of them, just to come and listen when we meet with the state senators. It's just an idea, and if you give us some dates of that breakfast idea, then we can contact the state senators. That's up to you.
Very good. Commissioner Boyle?
I, I sent a, a response to your call for suggestions, and I did it in all caps, because one of the things they suggested was that they would pay for burials of indigence, which blows my mind, because when I was head of that committee, we got it, the money cut down because we, we cremate instead of bury, except for children. We don't cremate children because they're, it's just, parents may come back, and it'd be a disaster if their child had been cremated. So, in any event, that's, that's just, that's just nothing, and I'm not sure that any other counties really get into that very much. If they do, it's not much money. What I think we ought to focus on is getting the state with its seven hundred and seventeen million dollar surplus to look over, look at taking over a section of state responsibilities that counties are performing. And one of them that rings a bell with me very clearly, I just renewed my automobile license plates over the internet, and I think it came from the state. And it cost a few extra bucks because I used a bank card, but, you know, saved me a trip to go out standing in line on Fifty-fourth Street, and it was worth it. And the other thing is that now, it's coming from Lincoln. It's not coming from Omaha, as far as I can see. I don't know. But why can't we ask them to take over the responsibility of issuing license plates? The reason I bring that up, it would be difficult because of the number of employees that, across the state, that are involved in that, but it is something that every county does. And I'm concerned that if we say, "We want you to pay for guarding ad litem's," you know, three, four million dollars, that, you know, Loop, Loop Town or wherever will say, "Well, we don't even have any guarding ad litem, so we don't care about that." I think it has to be something that affects the entire state. It can't be localized to us and Lancaster and Sarpy, all the usually big counties. That's my, that's my preach of the day. I, I just think we ought to make it something that would, because I've told you this before, that whenever the governor goes to NACO and I'm there, I sit in the back of the room on purpose so that I can yell, and I stand up and he calls me, "He's Mike. Mike, go ahead, rip my hand up, Mike." And I stand up and say, "Governor, we want you to take over the cost of the criminal justice system." Well, the whole place erupts and applauds and everything else, and puts them on the spot, puts them on the spot, which is what that's all about. So, that's the sort of thing we need to, because we have that in common with the rest of the states. That's my point.
And NACO has talked about that, Commissioner Boyle, in terms of when, even prior to this initiative, during the tax modernization.
Right.
Different legislative initiatives, that there has to be a balance. It could be something more for urban counties versus the rural counties. So, we're very aware of that what's good for us may not be at the level of good for the rural, so.
I don't think that works. I think it has to be good for everybody.
Right.
It just, you know, it, it can't be something that just makes, makes us save money. I just.
Right. Court has to be a combination, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Uh-huh. Commissioner Craft?
Yes, and when the state files charges, our prosecutor has to pay court filing fees, and that should be discussed also, because that's mandated, we pay that.
Yep.
I don't recall seeing that on the list.
I don't either.
Thank you.
Okay. Nothing else? We do have need for an executive session for purposes of litigation. Do I have a motion?
I do go into executive session for that purpose.
And also, before we go in, please remember when we exit, there's an Administrative Services Committee up in nine oh three immediately following. And then, Commissioner Boyle, I don't know what you want to do for sure about the tour of corrections, if, depending on the time.
We'll take a short break before we head upstairs.
Oh, yeah. Do you want to still do one, or?
I never want to do one.
Okay. Well, we'll just play it by ear, then. We'll see how long the committee goes.
Yeah, I don't know if many goes and go from there. It's one of the things, I have a point of personal privilege.
A young man who, Dana Marcos' husband died, who has been in an arrest home for many years, a good friend of mine. He was almost ten years younger than me. The reason I mention that is that I went to school over a period of, she had, I don't know, seventeen years at Creighton, and so, I knew a lot of people from various ages. And Matt was in a lot of my classes, along with Larry Good, his, his pal. And they operated a ranch pool, and one of the things, there's a book being written about it, and one of the things I got called about, about that book, was that Matt used to schedule during, during the bar, which was really rowdy, and of course, I enjoyed that. But anyway, the bar was really filled with a lot of fun-loving people, and they would have a contest, when I was mayor, of a Mayor Mike Boyle look-alike contest. And so, I would get up on the stage along with three other people, and they would say, the, the audience would vote who looked the most like Mayor Boyle. And I never, I never won. And people, people would clap, you know, for this, that, and the best one I remember was this really terrific African-American woman who won. She was so much fun, but it was a really great place, and Matt and Larry really knew how to run things right. And so, I remember him very fondly, and someone who's really contributed to our community in a, in a big way, not only professionally, but really brought the music scene on big time. And, and so, I extend, I know that if I could, on behalf of the board, we extend our sympathies to Dana, who's been a wonderful.
Yes.
A wonderful wife and partner.
We'll prepare a resolution.
Good.
On that issue, Commissioner Boyle.
Okay.
And maybe have it prepared for next week, if we could. Thanks.
And as far as the look-alike contest, Commissioner Boyle, I would nominate the mayor in Canada that's been.
Thanks.
In the news recently.
Thanks. That's perfect. You're such a pal. Thank you.
Once we come out of executive session, maybe take about twenty minutes before we start up to Administrative Services Committee, if anybody can grab a bite.
I do.
Please vote.
Are you a yes, Mike? Are you a yes?
I'm a yes.
Yeah. Motion passes.